I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Amen. Okay. We had a budget work session, but you all know that because most of you were there anyway. And then we just had an executive session, which we're discussing who we wanted to hire as an arbitrator for PBA discussions. All right. Next item, any public or private, public comment or private comment or visitor's comments? None? All right. We're going to meet next on November 20th at 7:00 PM. We're going to be closed on November 6th for Election Day. Voting districts 1 and 8 have been moved to the Bucks County Health Department at 1282 Alms House Road. CB Cares Pumpkin Fest is this Saturday. The Maravine Tile Works from 2 to whatever darkness. It's a wonderful event. $20 per carload if anybody needs some tickets. I have some. Bicent-- and they're free because I got a bunch and I can't go. Bicentennial memorabilia for sale. Mercer tiles and T-shirts and bricks. And we're planting our oak trees again this Saturday at 8:00 AM at New Britain Road Access to Central Park. It's only going to be for a couple hours. I think there are about 100 trees planted. Fifty-five left to do. Okay. Veterans Day celebration is November 11th at the Senior Center from 1 to 3. It's a free brunch meal for our veterans and their families. So please come. It's a free event and it's in furtherance of our bicentennial celebration. Thompson Performing Arts Series continues. One last day for the Coco movie at the Covenant Bank Amphitheater on Friday, October 19th. It's this Friday. Lead and yard waste recycling is between March and December. Wait, we still doing it? Yes, we're still doing it, March, December, 9:00 AM to 11:00, third Saturday of each month. So that continues at New Britain Road entrance to Central Park. You can purchase your discount movie tickets at our administrative offices. Daylight Savings Time, Sunday, November 4th. Check your smoke detectors. Is that the one where we fall back, get an extra hour?
It's dark coming to work and going back to work.
All right. Next on the agenda is approval of our minutes from the budget work session on October 2nd. Is there a motion to approve the minutes or actually notes from the budget work session?
Move to approve.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Where are our minutes for the regular meeting, October 2nd? Is there a motion to approve the regular minutes from the meeting of October 2nd?
I'll move to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okey-dokey. Correspondents?
I have nothing at this time.
Reports from the solicitor?
I have one item. You'll recall it's your last meeting you approved, or meeting before that, I guess, the conditional use application of the developer of the Burke Farm as well as the subdivision plan. Because it's a conditional use approval, we need to generate a written decision. So what you have before you is a written decision that reflects the actions taken. I would ask the board to approve the written decision and authorize its execution.
Is there a motion to approve the written decision of the Burke track? What is this?
Conditional use.
Conditional use.
Yes, for conditional use, yes.
Yes, is that a yes? Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Excellent, thank you. Anything else?
Nope.
All righty then. Chief, I mean lieutenant?
Nothing to report.
Nothing.
Director of Operations?
Nope.
Get out.
Pinch me, pinch me.
Really? Manager, nothing at this time. Okay. All right. Supervisors, starting with Jen.
Nothing, Jen. Thank you.
Ken?
Just wanted to mention about the Pension Advisory Committee. We met on Monday and the previous two meetings, they had met with the investment advisor and the actuary. So they're getting up to speed and they will be coming back to, they want to present to the Board of Supervisors what their strategy is going to be, what they're going to recommend to the Board. And that would probably come back to us in January. So they're putting together some plans and they want to bring that strategy forward to make sure you guys are in line with it. So you'll be seeing that in January.
Okay, thanks.
Other than that, no. Oh, just a comment about the tree planting. Like Barb had mentioned, it's the Saturday, again, this last Saturday, there was about approximately 20 people, 20, 25, but all 55 trees got in within two hours.
Amazing.
So it went extremely well with the holes already dug and the trees in. It went extremely smooth. So thank you to the staff for making that run so good. So that's it.
Okay, thanks. Rick, you got anything?
Yes, I was busy. I guess I'll go through what I've been doing, keep everybody up to date. The, we had a Pebble Ridge Sewer Committee meeting with Pebble Ridge residents, with Bucks County Water and Sewer Authority, Gilmore Associates, and staff, Stephanie and Ken Wallace. Very good. It was good to hear everybody explain what they thought their role was and each member was able to bounce things off back and forth and make sure it was clear who's doing what and how to get information. And one of the things that came, and they also reviewed the monthly, the bills anyway, that we've received so far for the Pebble Ridge Sewer Project. And one of the things that came out of that was now that the excitement is really starting, we reach out to the residents and get the communication going. For example, John Butler mentioned, once he starts breaking the rock, it's constant. It's hour after hour after hour. And he feels it wouldn't be surprised if we start getting some phone calls saying, hey, what's that noise out there and things like that. So the suggestion was to get a, I call it a flyer, something to put on the refrigerator so that eight months from now, when they hear this rock being pulverized, they can call. It'll be the residents that were on the committee, township, Stephanie, Bucks County Water and Sewer Authority. So they can look six, eight months from now and say, uh-oh, what's all this noise or what's that truck? And they can call and get answers. And that's one of the things they complained about before was the communication wasn't ongoing. So hopefully they'll put it on the refrigerator so when they start hearing loud sounds, they'll call. Planning Commission meetings, you'll see later, Judy will explain, as I mentioned, we were updating and cleaning up the ordinances and you'll understand why it's a challenge for some of the planning commission members when Judy takes us through each one of these. You're going to want to, you'll be excited too. We also have a DTMA meeting for the Pebble Ridge residents. We did not have a very good response, but we have, for water, I'm sorry, we did not have a very good response at the present to take the water. So we did find a core of residents that are interested, Stony Lane and Woodbridge area. So Dick Bach has gone out and talked to them. One of them came to our meeting and now we're going to invite 15, 20 residents in that pocket to come out, get into the nitty-gritty, get some kind of a commitment that they do want water. And we feel this approach will then give us the opportunity to go to the next street next to it, the next street next to it, instead of trying to do 262 residents saying, hey, do you want water? It just doesn't work. So we're taking that step, step approach. You're all welcome to come. It's November something. Let me know if you want to come. I'll give you the information. 22?
I believe it's better today.
November 12th.
12.
That's Monday.
Okay, yes, at 7:00 PM.
At 7:30.
At 7:30, as I said.
There's programs in this room. Yeah.
Yeah, right here. And are you going to talk about the budget work session?
No.
Okay. We had a budget work session and it was decided--
I didn't want to talk about it.
Well, it was decided that we were going to increase the millage by half a mil for 2019. Did hurt.
Okay. Ryan, you have anything?
Yes, I, as you guys know, Joe likes to give his updates for Kids Castle, but he couldn't be here. So, and I'm reading verbatim because you know, he's very specific about what he wants.
Good for him.
So he'd like to thank, and the entire township would like to thank Training for Warriors Doylestown. They did a recent fundraising event for Kids Castle, which raised $1,465. And it was a well-attended event that included a special exercise, training classes throughout the day for adults and fun games for children. Local businesses also donated items that were raffled off and, you know, just very appreciative of these fundraisers and third-party events that continue to happen for Kids Castle. And another thing that's exciting is Jeannie and John Hubbard have done a sponsorship of a new, and are doing a matching donation program. So they are going to match dollar for dollar up to $5,000. But all of these donations have to be made online. So as always, go to helpkidscastlenow.org to count towards this matching program. And he wanted me to repeat it. Helpkidscastle.org. Joe, I know you're watching, so I'm real happy. But again, great stuff and I can't, you know, fabulous effort, like for all the stuff that happens and you see this, like the stuff that Joe Salvati does as a Kids Castle Committee member of one behind the scenes, it's pretty impressive. So kudos to him as well.
Yeah, thanks. Good job. Is there anything else from you?
That's it.
Okay. I'm going to encourage everybody and invite everybody here on the board to the November 11th Veterans Day thing. It's going to be wonderful from 1 to 3 at the Senior Center. It's our, one of our last bicentennial events. Tomorrow, there's a group of us getting together to pick the items for the time capsule, what will be implanted. And then while this is all going on, the TAB Board and the other volunteers on the committee are creating the video, which document the entire year, which will be annotated and then also placed into the time capsule. And there'll be, of course, one made for general purposes. So there's a lot of work still going on. Everyone's pretty much excited. And don't forget the franking on December 18th. Bring your holiday cards to here on December 18th so that they can have the postmark with a special township bicentennial logo on the envelope. Very cool thing. And don't forget, as Stephanie says, bring one to mail to yourself so you have that documented for your own, you know, collection of stuff that your kids are just going to throw out after you die.
Good point.
That's what my daughter, you say, Ma, you better get rid of this stuff now because it's all going to go in the trash when you die. All right, that's all I have. Unfinished business. Let's look at this fireworks recommendation.
Yeah, this is the recommendation that I made back in the summer. I haven't really changed it. You guys wanted to take some time and think about it. So this would be, I'm looking for your feedback, how we would create an ordinance that we could hopefully enforce very easily through our police department.
Can't find it right now, but I remember we've got to take out Christmas and Christmas Eve. I mean, you allow fireworks on Christmas Eve and Christmas?
Mm-hmm.
I think the only thing that we're concerned about that is if there's a baby being born and it's got to be quiet. So I don't think Christmas Eve is a good time to have fireworks. Okay. Right?
What?
No, we're celebrating Christmas Eve, the birth of the baby, right? Why do we have fireworks? We have like quiet carols and--
I don't see Christmas or Christmas Day as necessarily a firework kind of holiday.
I agree with you. Okay. That's why I said take it out.
Generally.
I mean, that's the thought is like, you know, there's a child being born.
I don't remember. I know the last time we talked about this, we talked about provisions for people like getting married and stuff like that. Is that, that's in there?
No. We need to add that. People, like if they contact the office that they're having--
Yeah, I think, I think it's a permit. Yeah, and then we set the standard for what the, but you know, what if it's 50th wedding anniversary and they want to set off fireworks? If it's done through a process, I don't have a problem with that.
Yeah, we'll see. Right. We were going to allow for like New Year's Eve to January 1, the Chinese New Year, Memorial Day, July 4th. We're taking out Christmas and Christmas Eve.
I don't know the Chinese New Year. Does that have--
That floats. It floats. And the Chinese--
Shouldn't have the same hours restrictions?
No, the hours and restrictions would be the same.
Same as, okay.
But the New Year, the Chinese New Year floats and I know they had a lot to do with fireworks, so. And so that they would be, you could shoot off the New Year's Eve, New Year's Day fireworks could be from 11:45 to 12:15, but we would limit--
On New Year's Eve?
On New Year's Eve to New Year's Day. So you have a half an hour there to shoot fireworks off because the eve and the day kind of collide at midnight. Because the rest of the time, the hours would be restricted from 5:00 PM to 10:00 PM with a duration of 10 minutes. And you can only do it once for that, during that period, in the, within that five-hour period, you can only do it once for 10 minutes on your property.
That was one of the things that, is that what we, 10 minutes doesn't seem like a lot to me.
Doesn't seem a lot.
By the time you get one or two up in the air and all the kids start cheering and everything, I think 10 is a bit short.
I would do it like a half an hour.
I don't even see duration in an awful lot of the ordinances. A lot of people, I mean, are people really going to shoot off fireworks for, constantly for two hours? I mean, will they?
What's annoying is that they'll shoot off like five minutes worth and then another half hour goes by and then they'll shoot off five more minutes worth. And it goes on like that throughout the night. It's the interruptions.
What about like a Doylestown Country Club that does their 4th of July on, this is just residential, right?
Yeah, this would not be for a person, like when we do, this is for commercial or an organization, us, like when we do our fireworks.
Those are all permanent.
Those are permanent and those are, those are much larger shells. They're coming in with actual shooters.
Got it.
These are the ones that the residents can now buy and light off in their backyard, so to speak. So we're, I know everybody wanted to kind of think about how we can kind of control it because since the new law passed, it's kind of gotten a little bit out of control. And so--
To touch on Barbara's thing--
No, Christmas or Christmas Eve.
No, okay, no, but I meant the duration.
Yeah.
Also, Stephanie's suggesting that you can only do it once and every day. And I don't know if that's, that wouldn't, I mean, that means you couldn't do it for 20 minutes and then at night do it for 20 minutes again. Right. I don't know if that's whatever, I don't know what the board's feeling.
I don't particularly care for that. I think that would be really difficult to enforce. And if you're having a party and you want to set it off after dinner and then again at, you know, so I think--
I don't support that. What we're trying to limit here is the constant, you know, people doing it over here and then they're doing it over here, you know, all night long.
Oh, I'm with you. I just, I'm just saying maybe we should take out doing it once a day as a rule, as an ordinance.
And do what?
And just keep it open like Jen's saying.
That way you can have fireworks at 6:30 or whatever after dinner and then, you know, midnight.
Still only in those days.
Only on, yeah.
Those days within those timeframes.
Right. I think limiting it, the days changes a lot of what your concern is because it's not a random Wednesday, you're getting pups in the air.
Right.
Unless you contact us and let us know it's your parents' 50th wedding anniversary. I like that idea.
So it's, so only in those timeframes, it doesn't matter how often you want to do it and that's how I'm, I'm okay with that.
The other thing I was wondering if you want to think about is whether you want to have the language that says the board may approve another night. Let's suppose there's another Super Bowl or there's a World Series or something else.
I love that recipe.
And I don't think you want to be back modifying the ordinance.
Another Super Bowl, right? Special occasion determined by the board.
For supervisors, yeah.
I like that. Good idea.
What about Labor Day? Is that not some holiday that people like to shoot off their fireworks? I mean, we could add it. I don't know.
I've never, I don't see fireworks for Labor Day.
Yeah. I don't necessarily.
Whatever. Flag Day, no.
No.
The only other part that was missing was do we want to have a dollar amount on a fine if there's abuse?
Yes.
Yeah, you do.
Of course.
Up to $1,000.
What do you want to have a structured fine because you don't want to have to have the DJ have a hearing every time? You want to have a structure.
First offense? What do you suggest?
I don't know, 50, 500 and 1,000? I mean--
100, 500 and 1,000.
That's fine. I'm just, I threw something out there.
That's good.
Well, just to finally wrap this up, is it appropriate for us to make a motion for Jeff to craft an ordinance with what we've discussed based on what Stephanie was able to copy and send and move this on?
Let's craft it and let's not advertise it until you look at the final version.
Right.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. All right. Thank you. New business, cleaning up old ordinances.
Go get them, Judy.
Hi, Judy Stern Goldstein with Mashin James. Thank you for putting this on the agenda tonight. The Planning Commission and Sinclair have been working for several years, on and off, seems like forever, on cleaning up some ordinance issues. And every time we get close to something, like, all right, let's not take it forward because we're doing the next one. And then they'd be stalled for whatever reason and something else would come up and Sinclair would have another list and we would just go through it. So in August, we pushed through and the Planning Commission persevered and we came up with a pretty comprehensive list of items. And that's in the one memo. And the second memo is the additional items that were on Sinclair's list and some other things that hadn't yet been addressed that we pushed through at the September meeting. So what we have before you tonight are two memos dealing with a number of ordinance cleanup issues. I'm just going to run through the topics quickly. Dealing with outdoor storage, cleaning up some inconsistencies in the current ordinance that permitted outdoor storage but didn't say where you could have it. Livestock, there was some discrepancy 50 feet or 100 feet from the property line, whether you were in accessory use or in agricultural use. It left some ambiguity. We're saying 100 feet no matter what. Accessory structures and detached garages, as long as you, in the current ordinance, as long as you call your outbuilding a garage, you could have it closer to the property line. So we're cleaning up, clearing up that discrepancy. An accessory structure is an accessory structure, 144 square feet or larger, you have to deal with your setbacks. Agricultural use, this always required an annual permit for sales, but there's no permit form, there's no permit. So we took that requirement out of the ordinance because we've never had a permit for it. Pool, just clearing up, it's regarding UCC, not Boca Code anymore. And then mineral extraction, everything in our current ordinance deals with quarry. MPC deals with mineral extraction, which deals with all different types of extraction of minerals, including gas. So we're updating the ordinance to include that. That was the first memo. Second memo was the additional items. Tract width, we have a used B-15. It's the only, only use in the whole ordinance to deal with tract width. Everything else deals with lot width, so we're just eliminating that section. ADA parking, our parking spaces are 10 by 20. Our ordinance had a specific size for handicap spaces, but it was in conflict with ADAG and the ADA regulations, so we just made it all consistent. Fair housing compliance, definition of family will be coming back to you at some future time. Right now, we're proposing eliminating the B-11 group home and replacing it, and B-11 is a residential group home, replacing it with C-13 institutional residences because as you all know, if a group of individuals in a protected class are living together as a family, they have the right to live together as a family, as any other family in a residential dwelling. Once it reaches an institutional use, which is what the intent sort of was of the prior B-11, it's regulated differently. So we're clearing that up and that's consistent with what we've been hearing from Rachel Wentworth, who will be issuing a memo to the township shortly. Let's see what else we had. And then requests for reasonable accommodation. These are a series of regulations for the zoning officer to make sort of a office determination so that if someone that is part of a protected class would normally need to come before the zoning hearing board, they wouldn't need to. And that's part of ADA also. For instance, if someone needed to build a handicap ramp to access their building and that would put them over the impervious, they would not need to come to the zoning hearing board where their friends and neighbors could protest and possibly they could be discriminated against, it would be a desk decision. That in a nutshell is the ordinance amendment that we're just, we're just asking for you to authorize advertising tonight. It'll come back to the Planning Commission, it'll go to the Bucks County Planning Commission. You'll have reviews and we'll come back for a hearing.
motions to advertise the cleanup provisions to the ordinances.
I'd like to ask some questions.
Okay.
So in the livestock section, it states that the use requires a memo of at least five acres for keeping of livestock in residential areas and permits no more than two animals every five acres. Livestock is defined as cattle, horses, ponies, donkeys, mules, hogs, sheeps, goats, poultry, rabbit and hare. So I know there's a lot of people that have backyard chicken coops on less than five acres and I think that's perfectly fine to have, but you can have a lot of chickens on one acre and have it be clean and not that much--
And rabbits too.
And rabbits. Rabbits tend to be like, they're more pets.
Rabbits come into the pets that--
Oh, okay.
Yeah, there's separate regulation regarding pets. They wouldn't be livestock, but poultry is.
Poultry, so I would, I would like to see that changed so that it allows you to have one acre for poultry.
Or you could do it so if you have more than X amount of chickens--
Right.
Because obviously you don't want to have somebody that has 100 chickens on an acre. You want to figure out a reasonable number, yeah.
Yeah, six chickens per--
Six is--
Per acre or whatever.
25 is usually the equivalent number when you're talking livestock, like poultry and to livestock.
Okay. Yeah, well, leave it up to--
The issue with the zoning officer is the male version makes a lot of noise.
Yeah, the roosters make, we get complaints about that, yeah.
And he constantly gets complaints, so that is why that wasn't broken out separately.
There are other, well, that was another change in, in one of the ordinances I was looking at was in 113-3, there's an animal definition for noise, it's the--
It's a noise nuisance.
They don't really include livestock or it's not, it's not as clear. It says including household pets such as dogs and cats. So maybe if we put livestock in the nuisance, then it would cut down on that, then that would cover the noise that maybe a rooster might make or, or we can embed it in this. I think that makes it difficult from an enforcement standpoint because the dog barking is, is, you know, pretty specific and everything. I think the, I mean, we definitely, you know, in terms of roosters, I'm not quite sure what to do with them. I know we do get complaints sometimes because there are some farms that have more like five acre, that have a rooster.
It's becoming very residential too.
Yeah.
And they have roosters in their background.
We've written ordinances--
Chickens are one thing, roosters are--
We dealt with this in Wrightstown, which is more rural than you, and we've dealt with this in more, more, much more dense communities too. We help--
I don't know about that.
Nurture Nature do something in the city of Easton. But it comes down to the sensibilities and the wants and the desires of the community.
Chickens can lay eggs without roosters, those of you that don't know.
I've seen ordinances where they say one rooster, only one rooster allowed per--
For chickens?
Per acre or per, you know, because they are the noisy here. I wouldn't, I wouldn't want to see roosters in an R1 zoning.
Well, roosters are chickens. Let's not forget that.
Well, hens.
There's hens and roosters.
Yeah, chickens covers both genders.
So we have to specify hens as opposed to chickens.
And the number too, I think 25 per acre is a lot. Even if they're chickens or hens or friends of the family, it's 25, a lot.
10 chickens?
Up to 10, up to 12.
But some places say like up to, the first acre is, you know, five or 10, and then every quarter acre after that, you get to have an extra chicken? It's a lovely conversation.
Extra hen.
And hen, and then after, if you get to five acres, then there's no limit on that amount. That's the...
Actually, maybe we could separate this so that the keeping of livestock stays as it is, and we have a separate regulation written for poultry.
I like that, yeah.
So that the livestock stays at the five acres for the accessory use in the residential, and we could write something separate for poultry, and we'll take poultry out of this and bring that back to you at a later date.
That'll work.
That sounds good.
Or you can, you can include in that livestock, keeping chickens, more than X number of chickens, you'd need five acres. Because you want to keep it in there, I think, and just do the small, the small component to be the separate, separate ordinance.
Right. Because Judy, what if someone had enough, you know, five acres and they were running a, like a big chicken farm?
Well, that wouldn't be the accessory use, that would be the, that would be the actual agricultural use.
Right, no, I know. So where does, where's that, how many chickens do you need to do that?
You know what you need to do?
Just add it in.
Actually, I've just heard another twist, now I'm not sure.
Penn State Extension. You know, you might contact Penn State Extension.
Oh, that's a good idea.
Who has a lot of information about keeping of chickens and all that sort of, they might be a good idea of a good resource, so.
Why don't we just take the livestock A1 and A11 out for now?
Okay, whatever.
And we'll do some more research and come back. I'd rather not amend it and then come back and amend it again.
Right.
That's okay?
So can we pass on the ones that we were...
I think you have more questions.
I do, I have just a couple more. The agricultural use, it talks about the, as long as it's a mere accessory use of...
That's the current ordinance, yeah.
Product that is, is not from that land, I guess, is, is okay, as long as it's an accessory.
Right, and that's the way the, the acre registration is, is done throughout the state. If you have 10 acres or more and you're, you're in agricultural use, that language is right from that.
Okay.
And that's in your current ordinance.
It seems really vague, but, but it might be intentionally, I'm not sure.
I can't speak for the state regulation, but this matches it.
Okay. Also, the extraction.
Yes.
So this, this relates to, and my concern really is the natural gas and oil extraction. We, we have in another section, and I'm sorry to go bouncing into different sections, we have the extraction of coal, oil, natural gas leases excluded from our realty, realty transfer tax. So is that, is that a state?
That's probably state precluded.
Okay.
They tax it separately. So we're precluded from taxing it.
Okay, I was wondering why that was excluded.
That was it? Oh, that wasn't bad. Thank you.
Well, I think we need to still move to advertise the ordinances as, except for the livestock.
Livestock.
The livestock provision. All right, there's a motion, there's a second. Are you okay with advertising the rest? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, thanks. Got marching orders there.
Thank you.
Barbara, could, could we just, I missed on the unfinished business, just, can I just bounce back?
Sure, go ahead.
I missed the CS Davidson. I thought that was going to be crafted and up or down, or we were going to get that resolved at this meeting.
Not here, not on the agenda.
I know, that's why...
We should be good to go by the next meeting.
Not ready?
We've had some conversations internally with the staff, and I'm drafting the language we want them to include.
Sometimes these things take time.
No comment.
Thanks. That's, that's all right, Rick, it's good to keep us on the straight and narrow. Next item on the agenda is firefighter stipends.
Yes, the board will recall that you approved Resolution 1992 last year that indicated that we would provide an amount of $500 per qualified active member in the various township fire, the firefighting, fire companies that provide firefighters to Doylestown Township and who are residents of our municipality. Those firefighting companies have to provide us with information as to those members who qualify and their criteria, which the Doylestown Fire Company has done. They have quite a significant list of members. And then also, Chalfont has one, and Warrington Fire Company has one as well. So at this time, I would recommend that we, the board authorize that the equivalent amount of the 500 per the qualified firefighters be sent to each of the companies.
I have 39 people.
That's just in Doylestown.
That's all of them.
No, but they're, they're not all active, though.
Yeah.
It's the ones that have active next to their name.
Oh, I see.
I had 18.
You had 18 active?
For all the fire companies, I had 18 Doylestown residents active, which comes out to $9,000.
That's good. All right, we good to go?
Yep.
Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Okay, so the motion is that we're going to send the equivalent to the active members in the, in Doylestown Number One and Chalfont and Warrington. $500 stipends. There's a motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Inter municipal water supply agreement with a furlong water system. Did you need to speak to this? Or you're only here in case we have questions?
I think he's hoping not to.
Unless you want a summary of the project?
No, we, we've heard about this before. This is just the agreement.
This is the agreement.
This is the permanent agreement.
This is a good thing.
It's a very good thing. And the DTMA has already approved it, Buckingham has approved it, and we're the third wheel, the spoke of this wheel, that has brought water to an area that has had contamination in the furlong area. So I think it's exciting that we've been able to finalize the agreement and work together in partnership with our water authority and our neighbor to resolve a longstanding contaminated area with public water.
Okay, good job. Is there a motion to approve the inter municipal water supply agreement?
I'll move to approve.
Okay, so there's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, good. And then the foundation at the manor, it's the charitable organization supplying, supporting the, the Shoney Manor, because that's for a waiver for a zoning fee of $690. Has everyone had a chance to contemplate this?
Yes.
And your pleasure is to approve the waiver?
Yeah, I approve the waiver.
There's a motion, is there a second? See a second down here?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
That's a good, it's a good thing. Thank you. All right. All right, last thing is, what is that?
Pebble Ridge.
Pebble Ridge, yes.
Change order.
Alex is here in case anyone had any questions, just to... They gave us a discount and now they want an extension. Is that what happened?
Well, Alex, if you want to explain the, the situation and the weather...
It was weather.
It was weather. And obviously the creek has been, with all the rain, the creek is rising, is that correct? He's shaking his head, and it's really, they've done as much as they can down there, and they want to come back in the winter when everything is frozen and do the other part of the removal of the trees for the project, and also the old new roadside where they can't get in on that side of the stream.
Well, not going to wait until everything's frozen.
Well, then get it...
Firmed up.
Firmed up, yes.
If it's frozen, they're going to be asking for an extension to the spring.
Well, I don't think they'll have a problem getting any taken from trees versus the soggy ness, but I...
All right, we okay with this?
Well, yeah, I might, just as a clarification, and I hope Alex agrees, but Jim mentioned, or no, John Butler mentioned that even though he's asking for this extension, that it should not impact the final completion date, that they were going to be able to do other things and work around it. So even though he's asking for an extension, it's not going to extend the project, is guess what I'm trying to say.
They're extending the clearing and rubbing contract, but that should not, at this point, affect the overall construction quality.
Right, and Friday they updated their website, we updated our information, they are starting the saw cutting of Militia Hill Road. So in terms of what the work Bucks County Water and Sewer Authority is doing, they have begun to move forward on that.